You can ask Mr. Greg Wilcox. We had two bids. Wilcox had contacted three others. And so, and we only received the one that he said was the best. That's already agreed, that's decided upon, and you passed a resolution to move forward with the project. You just, as you were waiting on legal counsel to tell you how you could fund it. So the project's already going, your contracts were already signed.
So legal counsel determined you couldn't fund it from the CARES Act, but they can't determine how you could fund the money. They just told you in this, in this resolution, they said you cannot be taking out the CARES Act money.
Correct.
It does not qualify. But the trustees have to determine whether they're getting the money. Legal counsel can't tell you that.
Well, no, but they, they, the legal counsel advised them that it could have been called here by the other county.
Uh, so we haven't said to all those people that they're working off of?
Yes, and the county has issued, issued permits on the entire project, and a lot of the funding has to come out.
So where's, where's, where's the drugs?
You didn't ask for them.
I, I, I didn't ask, I didn't say that, I asked, where are the drugs?
Well, we can get it for you. But, again, I'm not assigned to the project, but I'm trying to help the trustees get this project going.
Thank you so much, I appreciate this meeting.
Who's the contractor? For four of the record, are you for or against opening this firehouse?
Yeah. What do I want to do is, we'll do it correctly.
All right, call the question. Roll call, Ms. Edwards.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna need an allocation of resolution to touch up the funding on that.
And then that could be done instead of that, not that money, especially if you still have to have a rest.
Now, we'll see, now we'll see the other two bids.
Ask Mr. Greg Wilcox.
Ask him, okay.
Or you can do the public records request.
Okay, well, if I do that, they'll get answered. You'll satisfy them.
There's a bunch of public records requests sitting out there now, not being answered.
I guess who's the contractor for the township?
All right, Jefferson Township. This is resolution number twenty-one dash zero five five. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees authorize the township administrator to perform an interim posturing hiring for a full-time EMS coordinator to fill the vacant full-time EMS battalion chief position at a starting rate of nineteen dollars per hour plus full benefits. Move to adopt resolution twenty-one dash oh five nine.
Five five?
Five five, yes.
I'll second motion.
This is what we talked about last meeting? Correct? So this is the position, we talked about this last meeting, this is actually fulfilling old McIntosh's thought, correct?
Correct. But it will not have work.
What?
It will not be the battalion chief.
If you strictly, yeah, that's correct.
Right. But Mann asked for an application, we talked about that, and Wright said he had somebody fulfill the position, and trustee Mann asked him for an application, did you get that application, trustee Mann?
Yes, I saw it.
Okay, um, so, uh, is, is that candidate, is that candidate double certified? Double cert?
No.
This is just hosting the job, this isn't hiring anybody, so you're gonna have plenty of time to pick over the candidates.
Not the way you guys work. How long is he, how long is he your chief of employer?
We're talking about candidates, Mr. McLaughlin, we're hosting the job. Call the question. Roll call, please.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Oh, all the, uh, staying, uh, withhold, whatever.
Resolution still passes. Okay, resolution number twenty-one, are we done?
Yeah.
Resolution number twenty-one dash zero five six. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees agree to hire slash promote blank as full-time road worker to fill the vacant full-time road worker position starting at a rate of seventeen dollars per hour plus full benefits effective eight twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one. Trustees nominate, that's the employee's name.
Jason Henry?
I move to appoint Jason Henry and adopt this resolution twenty-one oh five six.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Um, who made the motion?
I did.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes. Resolution passes. Trustees, do you have a copy of the next resolution on the agenda?
I'm looking for it.
I don't have it.
Could you put it on all the papers?
Oh, give me a second. I got the copy. There's the, there's the header, that's why I said use, hey, so use the header on that. Agenda, and, and, this, this is, this is by the.
No, that's the, uh, this is fireworks section.
There's a dollar, dollar an hour.
Oh, okay, sorry, that is all, you're right. I don't have that one, no, you have it?
I've got one here. You make some problems.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Let's go ahead and take care of, uh,
Yep.
Second half of the resolution you wanted to do.
Yep.
All right, resolution twenty-one dash zero five eight. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees, uh, Jefferson Township Board of Trustees promote Faith Vaughn from road, part-time road worker one position to a part-time road worker two position with a starting pay of seventeen per hour as this employee has reached their one-year anniversary with the township effective eight twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one. Move to adopt twenty-one dash five.
I don't know where you're looking at.
That's a little better, I'm gonna hear, that's, wait, no better.
This is zero five eight.
He, he, he's five eight, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, five eight. Jim, my type, my type is, my type is that, correct with that? We, that's, that's what we agree, you said, we agreed to express additional, change additional right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, my channel, you have to repeat it all over again.
Was that, you said two?
So where is the last, uh, total nine?
Now, the.
I'll make a motion with Donald, resolution twenty-one dash zero five eight.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Edwards.
Um, Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee Mann? Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes. We got, we caught over.
Did everybody copy this, Steve?
That was a second, I had initials, I'm sorry, Jim.
I just figured you had one that maybe you could mark up.
Thank you.
And that one's gonna be five seven, is that right, Jim?
Yeah. I just show the correction there. All right, resolution number twenty-one dash zero five nine. Jefferson Township.
Forty, you'll be seven, remember?
Five seven, excuse me. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby approve a raise of a dollar per hour for all part-time fire department wage classifications to begin with Sunday eight twenty-nine payroll period.
Well, I can legislate it off resolution twenty-one dash zero five seven.
I'll second motion.
Discussion. Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Just for, uh, everyone in the audience. Firefighter, paramedic, beginning pay is nineteen dollars an hour. Firefighter EMT's beginning pay is fifteen dollars per hour. Single certification staff will also receive a dollar raise in pay per classification. Additional incentives do exist for various certifications, serving as line officer in the chain of command, and other incentives do exist for shift work. Okay, uh, next resolution is number one dash zero five eight?
Nine.
Five nine?
Five nine, like us.
Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby amend resolution twenty-one dash zero four zero and change and submit the nuisance assessment for two thousand twenty from the original amount of ninety-eight, one thirty-nine, thirteen, and one oh seven, five ninety-three, oh four, to one oh three, one oh nine, ten, and one hundred and eight thousand, two sixty-four, fifty-six to the county. Move to adopt.
Does it need some clarity of what number, which number, I mean, you naturally think that the first one, which number goes to which number? Needing clarity in that, is there a word, I'm not doing an English language, is there a word to be used there to, clarify that, that, that might look a little wrong, would it be?
One, one second, and we'll get the discussion going.
Second.
Mr. Wolf, can you explain this?
Yes, attached, you have twenty-one, uh, resolution twenty-one dash zero four zero, the trustees unanimously approved the twentieth of July, two thousand twenty-one. It fully explains the breakdown of what the township charge is, and then what the tax additional fee is for the county to do the collection and the assessment. Um, so because you have the underlying document, all you're doing is amending the numbers to the original resolution. So you do not need clarity there, because you already named that document in this new resolution based on twenty-one dash oh four zero. You're just changing the two numbers, the number that the county, or the township assesses, and the amount that the county will assess as a whole.
That's not the question I'm asking, Steve. So you have, the first two amounts are changing ninety, use the first digit, ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and seven thousand.
Right.
Two, and then the second set of numbers, one oh three and one oh eight. So how, how, do they go one and one, or?
Respectively.
Huh?
Respectively.
There's the word we're looking for.
You can throw that in there, but again, you're pertaining to twenty-one dash oh four zero.
I just want a little clarity, I think it needs to be clarified a little bit.
Well, you can, you can do whatever you need to do, trustees.
We don't have these on ours, are you, when you say nuisance, are you talking about the grass? Or what? We don't have.
We're in the middle of the vote, you can ask that during the citizen comments.
I'm sorry.
We're in the middle of the vote.
They don't say weeds.
Thank you, that's all you had to say. That's all you had to say, real miscontrol and stuff.
Roll call, please.
This, McGuire and McLaughlin, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Okay, twenty-one dash zero five nine passes.
There are several changes, and, I think we just melt, make sure we can go ahead, please.
So I, I thought three times that it's Kevin, it's gonna be fifty-nine, it could be Kevin sixty, the, the last one, yeah.
Okay, resolution, ready, Mr. Mann?
Yeah.
Resolution number twenty-one dash zero six zero. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby appoint Mr. Kevin J. Niles to serve on the board of zoning appeals for Jefferson Township effective eight seven, two thousand twenty-one.
Eight seven, eight. Zero, right.
Eight seventeen, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-one dash zero six zero.
Second. Any discussion, it's like there's a letter attached. Roll call, please.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes. Okay. Okay, that takes us to citizen comments.
Do you have a medical and tools?
See, I brought that up. Uh, trustees, uh, you have to sign the approved purchase of the ambulance and the rescue tools so they can get ordered. Both vendors are waiting, so, Ms. Edwards, how do we put that together?
You have to have, is this a, 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 a grant?
Yeah, it's the AFG grant, so you, you've been involved in those before.
Can't even do anything till I know the percentages, that the grant's paying, and I have to get the payment quick, even pay for those two.
Okay, so, to do that, my question to you is, is so, I'll have the grant writer call you, and then they can give you those percentages. So we can get the trustees to sign what you want approved to purchase, so we can get an order. Just like the fire engine that you're finding out, we're multiple days waiting for the production of both stuff, and you shouldn't delay any order. Plus, we have to have the documentation in by the end of the year.
So you have to do, give the purchaser the purchase order number?
Yeah, that's all they need, a P O. So, I just wanted to cover that with you and the fiscal officer, because I need to know what you want to do.
You already, did you already create a purchase?
No.
I mean, I purchased a line item?
I have done nothing.
Didn't know line item, if you don't, don't.
We tried to do that during the budget this year, but it didn't hap, it didn't happen during the budget.
Well, you have to create a line item for that to have the money in there.
Correct, that's why I'm asking tonight for it, because I can't create order.
I, I didn't do that, the fire department did that before, I just set it up for them. So I can't, I can't help you, the grant writer and the fire department worked that out.
Okay.
I didn't do that, all I did was set it up once they gave me our information.
But you entered into U A N to create a new account, correct?
After I got the information, and then I got approved from the trustees.
Okay.
Usually, that is done at the beginning of the year, so now you're gonna have to do a whole resolution where they approve the line item and everything.
Right, that's why trustees, I tried to get that into the budget, certain the fire chief before he started the year.
Now that you haven't gotten it in there, now that you haven't gotten it in there, you have to create it and do a resolution. I mean, that's water under the bridge.
So trustees, it's either buy the tools and the rescue, and the resc, ambulance that's given to you by the government, or you say goodbye.
I said that when we first started talking about with you, how much is the grant? What is the total purchase, what we're buying, how much is tax barriers funds, and any of those numbers we paperwork, do we deal with them?
And we're giving all those to the R F P.
Well, see, I have not seen a copy of the R F P, that's what I've been asking from day one. And you said that I had it, and I never received the R F P.
All of that, it's. So trustee, and it was on the website as well, and it was advertised in the.
Why didn't you give it to the fiscal officer, who keeps the records?
So we're gonna give away grants over a line, line item discussion.
Correct.
Well, that's officially. No, no, you guys are not working with the fiscal officer, because you didn't provide the data.
Send her the information.
You, I've asked for the data several times, and you, I got all the email, I got all the emails, but you won't give it to me. But you won't give it to, you were not listening, you would say, I, I have that information, so don't even try to put that on me. It's you, trustees, and the administrator especially, because you may be the one that are over it, that will not give me the data, I am the clerk and the fiscal officer. I don't need to talk to a grant writer, I need to have the data.
Oh, so this is the, your objection to having a grant.
Did I say that? Stop putting words in my mouth, Mr. McGuire. I did not say that. Hee hee hee, my butt.
And are in your mouth?
There's nothing funny. And it won't be any fun if you keep it up. Because I'll be putting the lawsuit on you in the.
You don't want a grant writer. I just want to be clear, when we lose.
Do you need a Q tip or something to clean your ears out?
I think so.
I think so.
What's the deadline?
The deadline's passed, you guys are just playing around and procrastinating. And when you procrastinate and don't get the job done, then you blaming it on somebody else.
Uh, to answer your question, Mr. McGuire, the deadline is, AFG gave an extension due to COVID. And, and so we have time to get it done.
We don't need.
Get the equipment into production, and you have to sign all the contracts, just like you agree with the engine tanker here discovering. And all that paperwork has to be done before they can forward anything. The, the way things delay here, I'm worried about. So I'm advising you as I'm supposed to do as your advisor. You're gonna lose the grant if there's no cooperation.
The paperwork, we'll send, send her the data she needs and then we'll.
And make sure she get it.
I've asked for the R F P several times.
She don't have it.
Okay.
What is the deadline?
Go ahead, Kevin, then by December thirty-first, all the paperwork will have been approved.
Okay. But we're still, but we're still running time on the approval process, the longer we wait.
December thirty.
Right, and all R F Ps are passed by resolution with the R F P attached for the public records, so it is part of the public records.
Where is, why don't I have it?
Excuse me, I'm not, trustees, I'm just telling. It went with the resolution.
Where's the resolution, it's posted on the website, and it's not with the resolution, if there's a resolution. Can you tell me the resolution number, please?
You're the keeper of the.
I asked a question, Mr. McGuire, can you tell me the resolution number? You can't, can you? Then you need to be quiet and get somebody who can give me the resolution number.
All right. Go on to citizen comments. When you address the board, please read your name and address for the record. Maxie, you're up.
Maxie, John, uh, forty-eight, forty-three Vanguard. You know, guys, um, this is not real. But anyway, moving on. You said we get to do cutoffs, is that correct?
I think it's already been bought.
Okay, what kind do we get?
Steel.
What kind do we have?
Steel.
And we know it's bad.
Uh, that's, Jim said, I don't know that.
Well, every time I ask Mr. McGuire, it's not good Q and A, which is fair, but if he doesn't know anything about anything, how do you know it's bad? That'd be like they trying to tell you something about bank working, I don't know, only thing I know is when I walk in there, the door would open for me, unless I'm wearing my gun, and a couple times I went in the bank and opened the door with my gun, and I showed them, guess what they told me? Sometime it works, sometime it doesn't. So how do you know it's bad? This is not a trick question, how do you know it's bad?
I'm going off the-
Okay.
I was told, so-
That's fair.
I guess every time I get a P O, I should go make sure it works, start it up and run it, Maxie.
No, you're the man, you're supposed to know what's going on.
So, uh, we ears, stuff like that?
I mean, you're supposed to be president, right, you should know something, but that's okay, we're gonna go-
I know it was bought, state bid.
Okay. So, I'm just wondering, I, you know, what do we use the cut-off saw for?
To cut pavement.
Okay, good, okay, I was wondering, uh, I have a neighbor that's been just riding me hard, forty-nine hundred, Hayden Drive, they put a school bus up in New York, and he's just having a fit, in fact, he called the, um, he called the, um, our Premier League-
We don't want.
Hayden, up there where we put the sign, you know, bought the sign.
Here.
Okay, and man, he's been calling like, but anyway, and, um, guys, we need to know what our inventory is, I, I, you know, uh, though you bought something, I might have borrowed it, never go to bank, it's still on the book, and it happens, it's still on the books, so where is this inventory at? We said we need new generators for our fire trucks, Amalanta, where do the old ones come when we buy the new ones? This is not a trick question, I mean, I'm just, what do we do with them after we get the new ones?
I think the, the ambulances, the ambulances, those that, that-
Yes.
The, the generator guy, I'm gonna sue you, sue me, scrap it.
I'm not involved with the-
There's the O n, there's O n's.
O n?
Yes, they're O n, so that says it all.
His name of generator.
That says it all, green.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, that says it all, so where do they go?
I honestly do not know, but that's, that's a good question.
Even if they jumped, it wasn't that annoying.
Yeah.
That's a little different question, because it's attached to the chassis, so I don't know.
You slide out of the door.
It's not gonna be a separate inventory item, basically, that's gonna be accounted for as a part of the ambulance, it's the heart of the whole-
My question is, it should be brought back to the township? We paid for it? I mean, I'm not saying it's a trick question.
I know, I have a problem with saying, so, have a policy, we bring it back, you set it all up, and save the parts.
Exactly.